Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Folks, if everyone can please remain standing for a moment, we're going to recognize Dan Balbassari, the 2015 Colts Neck High School graduate who lost his life recently in an airplane accident serving in the United States Marine Corps. Thank you. There will be a memorial service at Colts Neck High School Football Field tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., honoring Dan.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Words of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Atbury Park Press, issue of June 16, 2016. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and all the requirements of posting of notices have been met. Approval of the minutes. Any questions? Or motion? Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Pete.
Mrs. Canario?
Here.
Vote on the minutes.
Oh, abstain, I'm sorry.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Communications are maintained in the file office of the Board Secretary. Superintendent's report.
All right, so very busy summer so far. We haven't been here since the end of June, so intervening several weeks, we've initiated a number of transitions. So Dr. Taylor has transitioned to the Special Services Department, Ms. How is transitioned to Curriculum Instruction, and those transitions have gone very seamlessly. Brian Donahue has started over at Colts Neck High School as the principal, so we're off and running for the summer. We had an awesome retreat a few weeks back, based on Adam Grant's work, Originals. One of the things we did as an administrative team is we actually had sort of a Shark Tank Innovation Challenge, where the admins were assigned to random teams, had to pitch each other ideas that would benefit the school in some manner, had some real tight timelines around it, and then over the course of the day, we narrowed down the ideas, and then ultimately, the room selected one idea that we would take a look at and move forward with. So it was an excellent day, it was a highly engaged day, and I was really, you know, left feeling really good about the admin team here and the work that we were all engaged in. We've had two meetings so far with the principals to talk about the school goals for next year and accompanying action plans, so that work is underway in earnest. An awful lot of work going on around the infrastructure of the district. Obviously, you have the track and turf project at Howell High School that's going according to schedule and going very well, looks incredible over there. But there's an awful lot of other work going on throughout the district. We're renovating a couple of the media center areas, a number of computer labs, and one of the things that we're doing across the district that I'm excited about is painting a number of accent walls in the rooms, you know, to brighten up the classroom experience for students. And it's a little thing, but to sit in a room that looks, you know, sort of four by four institutional is not exactly stimulating anyone, and I think to take some real bright colors, and we used research that corroborates student learning, to select three colors that we really went with to start painting those walls, so that work is underway. Also excited to note that Dr. Sharp and I were accepted to present at the FEA, NJPSA, NJASCD Conference in the fall on the work that we've done around the Aspiring Administrators' Academy and cultivating our own leaders here in the district. I think that, you know, one of the tenants of our strategic plan was really to, you know, develop processes to provide leadership opportunities for the folks within our district who were, you know, engaged in the work on a daily basis, on a yearly basis, and then ultimately, to hopefully move some of those folks through the administrative continuum. And, you know, I think it's been incredibly successful, and as a matter of fact, if I look out at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight administrators in the audience right now, all eight have been promoted in the past six years. So I think that that's a testament to what we're doing with the opportunities for our folks, and that's not a plug, that just happened to be as I looked out and can see that. So I think that that's a strong testament to the work we're doing as a district to grow our own. A few reporting requirements, so we have our final class statistics for the class of 2017. So the total graduates for 2017 were 2,746 across our six high schools. We had 1,125 students who graduated through what's known as substitute competency assessments. What that means is they had certain scores on the SAT, ACT, and other standardized assessments that replaced having to take PARC. We had 16 students that graduated through the portfolio appeals process in either math or language arts, and we had 167 students that graduated through alternative requirements specified in their IEP. The total students that were denied graduation from the 12th grade class across the six high schools were seven, but all seven of those students are enrolled and on track to ultimately graduate, we're proud to note. The total number of students denied graduation from 12th grade class because of failure to pass a high school end-of-course assessment was zero. Some interesting statistics, 92.9% of our students are furthering their education in either four or two-year institution. 1.5% of our graduating seniors are going on to serve the armed forces. 4.4% of our graduates are moving right into the workplace. And the class of 2017, and this is self-reported data, but it's important data, earned over $84 million in scholarship money, so I think that's a testament to how well that class And we also have the, on the agenda this evening, the approval of the anti-bullying bill of rights self-assessment. This is something that every district has to do through the Department of Education, and what it is, is it's a rubric scored over eight different elements totaling anywhere up to 78 total points. It's really designed around the specific types of trainings and opportunities that are offered in the district in order to enact the anti-bullying bill of rights in the most appropriate manner across the district, and so all of our schools are well into the 70s in their self-assessments, which is a testament to the good work that's going on with the ABR specialists across the district, so we're proud of that. That concludes my report.
The board reports curriculum.
Okay. We had a finance committee meeting back on August, I'm sorry, August 18, I'm sorry, July 18. Basically, what we did is Building and Grounds presented an update on the improvements to the Howell Athletic Field, as Mr. Sampson had noticed. In addition to that, they also basically just went over the fact that they're very happy with the performance of the contractor, and by September 1, the project should be 100% complete. As a matter of fact, there were a couple of change orders made along the way with this project, and they're actually on the agenda for us to approve tonight. They amounted to about $5,000. The one emergency of the summer was the boiler in this building, which has actually been here since 1959, but it's rotting from the inside out, and it can't get certified, and there's a lot of asbestos there. So the boiler has to be removed, which isn't easy. As a matter of fact, the DEP person has to be here the whole time that it gets taken out, but a new boiler should last 50 years, and we're actually awarding it tonight. You'll see the purchase and installation of that boiler, and the funding's coming from our capital reserves. And then what Building and Grounds did is they just went over all the summer projects at all the various schools. Mr. Sampson had talked about new paint, so what the Building and Grounds Department did is they just went through each school and told us all the different projects that were being worked on over the summer. We also discussed the issue of the tennis courts at Marlboro, which is going to be a major issue down the road, and it's not looking good for the tennis team being able to use those courts this year, so they're going to have to go to the Marlboro Swim Club for the practices and matches. And then, just switching gears to the curriculum committee, we had our meeting tonight, right before this meeting, which was Ms. Howell's first meeting, and Dr. Hazel was there, and she introduced Shayna and Oscar Diaz, who were recently put in place in Curriculum and Instruction. This was our first meeting with both of them, and we just went over a comprehensive equity plan, which basically makes sure the policies and procedures are in line with legislation and regulations handed down from the state. We're actually approving the statement of assurance tonight, which is going to be sent to the county superintendent. With respect to the IB program, obviously, the last time we were at Freehold Township, we had a full update on that, and it should be noted that when the staff here went out to different schools in New Jersey where they had an IB program, they were told, you know, "Don't worry if not every, like, if no diplomas are handed out for this program." And in fact, this year, 19 students got the diploma, so it really shows what a differentiated school district this is. I mean, there's school districts out there which didn't have one diploma handed out for the first three years of the program. So as was mentioned at the last meeting, next year, they're looking at Howell to start the IB program, and of course, the goal ultimately is to get it in all the buildings. And with respect to summer school, the Summer Academy is ending August 11, and that's both for original credit and for credit recovery. There was 168 students enrolled there. A vast majority of them are for original credit. 58 are registered or were registered for credit recovery, and it's good that this number's coming down. Back in 2015, there were actually 87 students in credit recovery, so it's good that that number's coming down. And with, sticking with the summer educational programs, the AP Summer Bridge Program is going to be starting, and we should point out that last year, every student who took it passed their course, and we actually have 241 students enrolled in AP Summer Bridge, which is 100 more students enrolled than last year. With respect to Computer Science Pathways Project, we've talked about this before, where year two of a five-year grant, there's 20 students enrolled for this, for this coming school year, and it was nice to see that there's five females out of the 20. Professional development is ongoing with this program. They're also going to begin to develop Pathway Number Two, and they could consider something in health sciences for that project. And then we ended our curriculum committee meeting with some discussion about summer reading assignments. Obviously, students in various grades read the same book, and we just talked about potential changes down the road and what that's all about, and that's it.
Policy.
Hello. We met on July 6 here at Pine's central office, and everybody had a good laugh when I came in right off the, from work in my lifeguard uniform. But after we had a good laugh, we got back to work, and there's a lot of policy changes in definition and wording, the first being the evaluation of the superintendent. The New Jersey State Board of Education recently adopted provisions, effective educator. The only revision required in this policy is removed from the written to the annual written performance report. The department proposes throughout the chapter to replace the word "written performance report" to the annual written performance report with the annual performance report. An annual performance report is the correct term to use when evaluating teaching staff members. The next revision, District Mentoring, the New Jersey State Board. In this provision, the revisions in the Administrative Code requires a few district mentoring programs. The policy replaces the term "core curriculum" with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. In the next provision, 3223, 3224, the evaluation of administrators, including principals, vice principals, and assistant principals. The evaluations of the principals, vice principals, and the assistant principals have been revised by the New Jersey State Board. It's adopted at the NJAC, effective educator. This chapter addresses the evaluation process for all teaching staff members, including classroom teachers, educational service staff members, including our school nurses, our guidance counselors, our child study team members, our library media specialists, including administrators, principals, vice principals, assistant principals, and principals. In this section, a lot of definitions changes. There are minor revisions in definitions. The new code deletes the term "long observations" and "short observations." Now we use the word, several sections of the new code refer to the person as the superintendent who's completed the evaluation to be the designated supervisor. So that's just a term, changes in the terminology. The next one, professional development for teachers and school learners, the New Jersey State Board. The revisions in the Administrative Code require revisions in the policy 3240, to be developed by October 31, if the teacher is new. If the teacher is hired before October 1, his personal plan can be twice a year. In 560, suspension. In this revision, Chapter 45, was recently signed into law, limiting the school's ability to expel or suspend a young person, a young student. It limits on out-of-school suspensions and expulsions in the school district. The school districts must implement early detection and prevention programs. Expulsion, PL 206, Chapter 45, was also recently signed into law, limiting school district's ability to expel or suspend a young student. In this law, places limits on the school district's suspension and expulsions in the school. Policy Guide 560 has been revised to incorporate the limitations outlined in the new law. 8505, school wellness and nutrition. The school districts that are participating in this National School Lunch Program, School Breakfast Program, are required to develop local wellness policy. In July of 2016, the United States Department of Agriculture finalized regulations to the Healthy, Hunger-Free Student Act. 8550, unpaid meals, outstanding food charges. School districts participating in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program has been informed by the United States Department of Agriculture that it must have an unpaid meal charge policy in place for this coming school year. The policy must explain how the food service program will handle situations when the child cannot afford to pay. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Mr. Messinger, thank you.
He did it.
Okay. Now we're up to public session. Dominica Greco? Can you step to the mic so we can hear you, please?
I do want to make a statement in favor of Dr. Greco, and I don't know if this is the right moment for me to do it, but I want to say something. My daughter has suffered from emotional disorders since third grade at the Tina Elementary School. By the time she entered Freehold Breach High School, after many psychiatric hospital studies and years of therapy, she was diagnosed with bipolar disorder and borderline personality disorder. If it was not for Dr. Brett Holman, she would have never made it through high school. It was her guiding right, as well as our parents' guiding right. During high school, there were many more hospital stays and various complications. And in the senior year of 2011, she had a long stay at High Focus. If it were not for Dr. Brett Holman's assistance, she would not have been a student. We hold him in the highest esteem and have always found him to be of the highest integrity, professional, honest, kind, caring, and having children, well-being as his main priority. I hope this will end with Dr. Holman's visit, and anything else to be appreciated, he is too late.
Okay. I need a motion to take, well, there's a few changes.
Yes, let me. So the agenda issued had some space holders for some bid in one situation and some finalization of insurance premiums in another. That is on the back table now for H6, approval of property and liability insurance, I2, which is the bid award for a boiler replacement, and I3 is approval of appropriation from Capital Reserve to fund the boiler replacement. In addition to that, I have some corrections on G3, approval of appointments. Under Heather Codron, add the salary amount of $45,460. She's an LTSB secretary appointment, that's under G3. Under G5, approval of honoraria, change the honorary appointment of Steven Genarone to head coach girls' basketball. Also, I have an addition to G7, which is approval of change of status, the reappointment of Dr. David Bleakley on the April 28 agenda. The new action would be to change from assistant principal at Freehold Township High School to principal at Marlboro High School. Step one, salary of $163, $369, pro-rated per annum, effective September 1, 2017. And finally, an addition, we'll call this K4, and it reads, "Resolved by the board to adopt and approve the HIB report and to deny the parental appeal discussed in executive session," and that's from this evening, so that's an add to the existing agenda.
I'd like a motion to take the rest of the agenda in one piece. G1 to K4. Second.
Time for second.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, I have to abstain from item G7.
And the, and?
I have to abstain from the doctor, his appointment at Marlboro. Not because you kicked my butt in triathlons, I don't want any hard feelings, but because I'm a conflicted board member, but I wish you the best of luck at Marlboro. You'll be great.
So just for the roll call vote, it's G7 and G2.
I said G7.
Yes, and G2.
And G2, retirement of Sean Boylan.
Okay, so those abstentions and the balance of the agenda, Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes. Full business? New business? New business?
So just like to, I'd ask Michael Dillon to stand. So Michael is, has now been appointed as our new Director of Guidance and Operations to replace Shayna Howe. Michael's been assistant principal with us at Monalpe High School since 2014, really oversees the RLA program over there, came to us as an administrator from a special needs school, has done some excellent work here in the district, and we think he'll be a very strong addition to the central administration, so, Michael, congratulations.
I want to thank you for the opportunity, Department of Education, to look forward to the state of our district as a part of our foundation. Thank you.
That's the first acceptance speech we ever had. Dr. Bleakley, if you could stand, so we're also appointing David Bleakley tonight as the principal of Marlboro High School. So David originally came to the district from Jackson High School as a social studies teacher, ultimately was a social studies, Freehold Township High School was then a social studies and world language supervisor at Freehold High School, then was, when we reimagined the Raze Academy, Dr. Hazel and I, back in 2012, David was the first individual to, that we appointed to run the new academy, did very well there for us for a few years, and then we moved him over to Freehold Township High School as an assistant principal. I still remember meeting Dr. Bleakley at a Barnes &amp; Noble in 2012, and he had a couple other job offers from a few other districts. I dealt with it and smirked a little bit and chuckled and said, "I think that if you see, take the long view here at Freehold Regional High School District, it will work out for you well if you keep your nose to the grindstone," and I think those words came to fruition, so, David, I know you're going to do an excellent job at Marlboro High School, so congratulations.
Okay. Madam President, there was no other new business?
Any other business? No. Go ahead.
Okay, the board does have a need to return to executive session, noting the resolution, the wording, adopting the wording as peers, talking about the open public meeting. Without rereading all that, Mr. Weiss, the board will be entering to closed session to discuss certain items, and specifically matters concerning negotiations and matters involving the employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms of condition of employment, and specifically the renegotiation of the superintendent's contract. The board will return to open session to conduct business at conclusion of the executive session, and is anticipated that the discussion will take no longer than one hour, which means that the board will return to take action no later than 10 o'clock, or, excuse me, 9:54.
A motion to convene to executive? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Madam President, now that we're back in public session, with your permission, I'll just, I'll read the board's resolution. Whereas the Freehold Regional High School District desires to maintain Mr. Charles Sampson in the position of superintendent, whereas the board and Mr. Sampson engaged in good faith negotiations for a new employment contract for Mr. Sampson to remain at the position of superintendent that be effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2022. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 18A, colon, 7, 8-J, and NJAC 6A, 23A, 3.1A, the board also forward the proposed employment contract for Mr. Sampson to continually serve as the superintendent to the interim executive county superintendent for Monmouth County for approval, and has received written approval and notice from the interim executive county superintendent for Monmouth County that it has been determined that the proposed employment contract for Mr. Sampson is in compliance with the physical accountability, efficient, and budgetary regulations. Whereas the approved new employment contract for Mr. Sampson replaces and supersedes all prior employment contracts, both express and implied between the parties, here too, for the time period of the new employment contract, and by approving and signing the new employment contract, both the board and Mr. Sampson are sent to a rescission of any and all prior contracts for the time period of the new employment contract, as well as to the agreement. It is therefore hereby resolved that the board approves and adopts the employment contract for Mr. Charles Sampson to continue to serve as superintendent, consistent with the terms and conditions set forth therein, and is approved as the interim executive county superintendent for Monmouth County per NJSA 18A, 7, 8-j, and NJAC 6A, 23A, dash, 3.1A.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
What, any discussion?
Any discussion?
Nope.
Long overdue. Yeah, Mr. Bruno, we'll have to, that's it, sorry.
Roll call.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Abstain.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yay!
Thank you.
I need a motion for a German. Second, first, I say yes. Motion? No?
I heard a second.
Okay.
I haven't heard a second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.